Right, okay. Now we get to election. Now we get to election and what happens?
I was looking at what's the seven.
That's what, okay. That's the budget. Fine.
But is that where it's supposed to be?
I'll tell you. Yes. What we budgeted, what we've always budgeted in the last few years is five thousand for the election for every year. We don't always use that much. And what happens is the, when we contract with the county to lease their equipment and stuff like that, they give us an estimated fee that we have to pay in the contract for whatever we are gonna use. But then if we don't use it, we get a refund. And the refund to that is in this estimated actual, if you look at X seven, when you go down there and it says their county refund, eleven forty-seven ninety, that was a refund for the election when I was here. That we, you know, so, you know, that, that five thousand what's spent is not, that's the seat. And more was spent for the election and the, and it depends on what you end up using. Like, for example, if you, if you have a problem with the equipment and you have to call a tech from the county out, then you're gonna have to pay more, okay? And if, and that's gonna happen. And if you don't think they're gonna go smooth, then you're gonna get that money back. But they estimate that they're gonna need it, you know, so. Okay, now to that, the front door system, we never did do that. Obviously, we had plans to replace that front door and make a more secure door. And that didn't get done. So that, you know, averaging the budget, it's that way to whether or not it has to be. Furniture and fixtures, I showed that to Margie. I have no idea what that is. I think it should be somewhere else in the county. It's not a budgeted item. It's, it looks like part of financials. Isn't that what you would say? Like a balance sheet item. So that probably could be circled and deducted from the bottom line, is my guess, so.
That was a journal.
No, yeah.
It was a journal.
It was building improvements and.
What it has to do with that hundred and six thousand.
I think it might. I think some of that is in there.
No, I'm gonna, balance sheet. They, they, the total assets and buildings and what that is. And there's an appreciation.
Right.
Which I don't know what the offset is of depreciation.
But it shouldn't be where it is.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be where it's at.
Somebody just gave them a word in.
Yeah. And, you know, the auditors will do that at the end of the year. They'll take like things you use for capital improvements and stuff and they'll put it, you know. So I think the one hundred and twenty-one thousand seven twenty can be deducted from your, your page three estimated actual total. We talked about all equities, what that is. And groceries, I would put that in maybe miscellaneous or office or something. Seven thousand groceries, I don't know what it was. I didn't print it out. Inspection fees, I don't know if that's what you're paying the inspector to inspect buildings and stuff. But it's, it's been budgeted in another area, you know.
That was Mark.
Mark.
So ninety-one, you're going to have yourself or ninety-one and seven?
And then insurance. We've budgeted eleven thousand fifty for the, you know, seventeen month. And it's seven thousand eight hundred. And the mayor's bond of ninety-two was included in there rather than being seven hundred dollars. But that's, it is insurance.
Right.
So.
Ninety-one four, go ahead.
Not where we usually put it. We could put it in there. It's just, you know. Not budgeted, is that something? And the, the maintenance, property maintenance, that, that all goes together with the, the other maintenance. Account. Meals and entertainment, mileage, miscellaneous. The lives could be, you know, we had a travel account. It could be paid to there. Meals and entertainment. I would put in miscellaneous because we don't have that much of that kind of stuff. But there's also another miscellaneous account there. So all those things need to be put in different places, basically. The miscellaneous expense account, which was budgeted nine twenty, you see, keep those things into it.
Right, I was just looking.
Not the mileage, mileage was your travel account. It would be.
Close to it.
And then office supplies, fourteen thousand one sixty-five would be budgeted. You've only got eight thousand six hundred fifty-two, but that's because it's scattered in different places. And that will. Where was X eight? On the first page before. Oh, maybe go over that. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I know. That, that legal and professional fees, we budgeted six thousand for the city attorney to pay them for legal, not for court, or, you know, just his legal. I mean, not as a judge, not prosecutor, okay? Which I guess they would just be charging for prosecution. They furnish a prosecutor. But it, you know, I can see what that is.
But possibly some of these bills may have prosecutor fee in it.
Probably does. It probably does. So part of that, if you.
We need to split out.
Yeah, we need to split out. And the other thing is you can estimate what it is because what they charge in their travel, it comes to about five hundred a month for a prosecutor over however many months. But then the thing that they do different, rather than what Lawrence and John need did, Lawrence and John charged a monthly fee of six fifty, but during the month. If we needed the prosecutor, you know, take, people would call in and we could take care of different things by calling him and getting it okay, and calling the judge. And people would call in and they would call us. They never billed for any of that.
Which is all that.
So it may look like you paid them more, but you did not. You know, by paying them six fifty a month.
And then, since the prosecutor comes from this firm, since the IRS was saying he needed to be paid as an employee, are we gonna be able to.
I don't think so.
With that, since it's a firm.
Well, see, it, it shouldn't be a firm. It should be a person that, that is the prosecutor, signs an oath. And I know they're not, every time, every time I see somebody different, they are not signing an oath. And in the past, we had a, we had a prosecutor and an alternate prosecutor. And if, say, John B, being the prosecutor, didn't show up and he took his oath. If he didn't show up and we had to get someone else, well, we had someone designated. And they had an oath on file also as an alternate. And the time came when we couldn't get him or the alternate, something happened. We had court set, people were here. And I called around and found someone to come and gave him the oath before they did it. And I felt safe doing that because at the time we had the authority to appoint a new officer. And I had no choice. And I'd have a prosecutor. So I.
Is that Galsco coming or is there somebody else?
Then they got somebody new because she.
And have, and have we.
We got new, there are, who recorded that person?
It's not, there's no oath for any prosecutors. I found one for the judge. I found one for the magistrate.
They, they, they included it in the bill.
Yeah.
And we had Lisa.
It is included in the bill.
We had Lisa at first. And then she decided to become a magistrate for San Antonio. So she quit the firm.
They, they do act in the authority of our city, so there has to be something.
Oh, I think they're okay, you know.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, like you're saying, an oath, an oath actually gives them authority from our city. So, so there is something like that.
And what you need to do, it needs to be a, you know, specific person. If it's gonna be from that firm or whatever.
Right, you have a backup. And they should.
But if you look, if you look at legal and professional fees. Just kind of hold it aside for a minute. And which was the other one? There's another person who I haven't presented, please, and it's also the, oh, come on. I always thought you were. Remember we did it one of the last ones, legal? Professional fees. I think it was professional fees in the twelve. If you look at number twelve, I think it's also in that law firm. Yeah, paid to them.
And it's one of your X's?
It's a X twelve, X twelve. Yeah. See, it's paid to the same law firm and it's something for John Gray. I think he probably wanted copies of something and paid for it. Or we paid him for it? I don't know. It's an expense.
Forty-four dollars.
I don't know.
They charged him.
So, so you would have to add fifty-six. Legal and professional. If it's over so many pages, they can charge fifteen dollars and they can charge labor for making copies.
And that was something given to the county. And that was something.
It probably was. And whatever it was, like I said, it's over so many pages. It's so much a page and after so many, they can charge more. They can charge labor per hour.
Five councilperson and the mayor.
It's probably what it was. But the main thing is it goes with the legal and professional.
I'm just guessing.
It says a contract, maybe copies of cons. Maybe, I know it might be.
The engineer contract.
Okay.
No, it's engineer contract.
Okay.
When it says. Another contract up there.
But that would be, that would be an office expense for copies.
I think we have a contract on him. I thought we just had like a.
Engineering.
Do we have an actual contract on him?
So, so part that goes to office and the other part goes in with the rest of the dates. Payroll admin. The county office has everybody, council, police, officers, the office. The next one does too. The one that says X ten, police, that's all employees are in there. They, you know, that was two together. I guess you would have to put together. You know, it's legislative for payroll, administration, payroll for police and put them both together. And for the judges and for the council. All of that should be. They are in different places. They, they weren't consistent. So, and that, y'all can just go through and see that's what's happening there.
I guess they put it in. They got a lot of them here and there's zero.
Oh, I think.
There's zero piles that he goes.
Because when you bought it, it's zero. It's like if you made a statement, you have to check. And then do it another way, it's gonna say, you know. I remember when the Saturn, the Delanda called me for help with him.
That's the one I had Linda right on.
It has all that, you know.
He said.
You put it up.
And, and, and just here, what she's done is probably the first. She put them somewhere.
She talked about admin, put it in super. Well, I think that's what she was trying.
And then get what was in police.
Yeah, which is basically what I'm gonna be doing. We're gonna put an account that can. But if you, at any rate, you can still see it's different ones in different places.
Right, but not all in the right, they all should even be in something.
So that's nine, at nine and ten, you can.
Handle eleven too.
Eleven also, eleven, that's, they have, that's contract labor from what I could tell. A lot that was Delandas and.
Okay. Okay, so that's contract.
That office for the general, that's, that should be on the police payroll as a child support. Then they want for response and child support, that doesn't have S D T F. Those should go under the police, because that's how they were paid.
And officer attorney was.
So there's a lot of, I think it seems to be correct. And payroll tax, I don't know, let's see that. I guess we should have budgeted more in the original. But I think what's happening with the payroll, when you were there, they, they worked a thirty-two hour week and they weren't allowed to have overtime unless they, like, maybe had a, had something happen at the end of your shift. They had to do paperwork and every part of it. Usually if you work the thirty-two hour week, it would still keep them under forty hours. Very rarely did they go to overtime. There is overtime in forty hours we take pretty often, right? So that's gonna increase what would be due on the payroll tax. And we didn't budget it for it because we were budgeting on a lower, you know, pay scale. All right.
We didn't, officers. Tagging on a half hour every paycheck.
A half hour?
Every day, you know. Out there, it's tagged on there.
Well, half hour's not bad. There's some that are going, you know, hours, you know.
And you judge, any judge is double pay on, on holiday.
Double pay?
Yeah.
If he.
Say he worked later day. He worked later day.
He got paid holiday pay and labor.
Yeah.
No.
And he, you know, I mean, let's wait just.
No, now wait a minute. If you do, if you work, if they hit the holiday.
They get paid for that.
They're supposed to, when they work, they get paid for the holiday and for working. Because if he gave up his ho, he gets, if you get a holiday, if you have a holiday coming, you're gonna get paid whether you're not. So if you're working, you get paid for the holiday and working. So he would get paid double for that. All right.
He worked it out before he got that.
Well, that's, he should have, Gene.
Yeah.
Okay. Petty cash fund, I used to have it at a different place. I had it on the court. I, I put that in the front.
County or budget.
Of what's in the accounts. Whatever was in the petty cash fund for court, petty cash fund for the city. They would be on the, on the front part of the financials and your tax rate and everything else. It has to be in the budget. That's when it's proposed in the article. Police department expense, there you can see, budgeted thirty-two thousand five hundred eighty. It shows they only spent eleven thousand one hundred sixty-three, but we've already seen that there's police department expenses and everything else. So once it hits there, hopefully it won't go to twenty-two thousand or whatever, thirty-two, yeah. So that's. And then postage and delivery, that should go in office. Professional fees, we already went down. That's part of the legal and professional. Publishing expense was budgeted eleven thirty-five. We spent nine twenty-one. And I think it might even go up because of the, the having posted in those and stuff. That, you know. And then streetlights, it looks, there, it sees, it says there's nothing budgeted for it. Like six thousand two hundred was spent. Streetlights were budgeted in the electric. If you look further down. And actually, when they were paid, the bills for the streetlights, they put them in both accounts, so. That's another one. It's just, how do you?
It's budgeted in the gas and electric?
It's budgeted in the gas and electric. And we certainly didn't have budget nine thousand. We budgeted thirteen, well, with what the twelve month budget adding on, nineteen thousand three hundred and forty would have been budgeted for all the utilities. Streetlights, building electric, phone, water, all of that should go more. And if you look, where I told the gas and electric, the internet, the telephone, the water and other, that's some of the streetlights. That fourteen seventy-three, that's some of the streetlights. And it came at eighteen forty-six, but if you add that sixth one up there, it's more. But telephone was never not a thousand six hundred. Part of that goes to the police department. If you look at, let's see. X thirteen, X thirteen, utilities, gas and electric, you'll see that. It includes, it includes streetlights is what I was trying to show you because looking at the amount of it, if you look at a bill for six hundred sixty-six or five hundred thirty-four, that's not the utility bill unless they're waiting on going. The streetlights usually cost about five to six hundred a month to pay for the streetlights. And those deco lights are.
Would it be consistent every month or it's included with the, with the regular bill?
No, it's a separate bill. The streetlights are a separate bill.
That should be consistent every month there.
No, because it depends on how much they run, how much.
They all have their own meter, the streetlights.
No, it's a group. Their meter or something. They, it's in the bills.
I thought it was a seven mile per light.
No, not the deco lights, not the.
Oh, really?
Not any of the, the ansel, the ansel light up there.
Or day in the month.
Yeah, there's different.
I thought it was so much for the light period.
No. No, it's always been, you know, it's like, are you telling them?
Yeah, I don't know that they have meter on.
I guess depending on what the light is, what the wattage and.
Some of them might be very sometimes.
They probably come out with it.
It is different.
It's different at the time, but it's in a range, general range. Okay, and then go to telephone, X fourteen. That's a huge amount to be spending on phone. But the best I can gather is some of those are mobile phones. Some belong to the police department and go to their expense. And here's a fax, here's, I don't know.
How many phones do we have?
What we, what we do is we get a separate bill for the six four eight six seven one three. And that has the internet on it and the fax machine is on it. The fax machine's not on there anymore. It's just the internet for that one. Well, I don't know, it got changed. I think they put the server on that line, which the server was hooked up to a line, so I don't know why. I guess the way they did it.
It's something where you should have a server.
It does have a server, but I'm saying the server was connected to a line and you still use the six seven one three for the fax machine. And now it's not, well, then don't go in there. Well, it wasn't. The fax machine was moved over by the printer and it didn't work. So I moved it out there to receive a fax, but it's not wanting to do that, but I did receive a fax. I just, I just plugged it up to the six four eight four nine two three, but I have to keep it unplugged if I'm not using it. Because when people call, it'll be that ring. Okay, the other line is six four eight four nine two three has a rollover, our second line, four nine two four. Okay? And.
Are your cell phones included?
And all cell phones are in here. It's like, and, and also there. There, the, see, there's something that, it's got a Sierra wireless. What is that? It's a phone, it's like a phone, but. That's it. That's what it is. Their, for that type of computers have a Sierra wireless.
They have like.
And it's an unlimited data right now.
But it's still a charge on the phone bill.
Right, there's two lines, there's two of them.
They each have one, yeah. And then they have a cell phone.
And they have a cell phone. And then there's two other cell phones that we have. And they're all on that one single bill. You know, well, the bill that.
Yeah, and I used to break them out. Like, I would put the police department one in their account and, and I noted it on the statement, this much was filed with police, this much was filed.
And one thing when I talked to them, like, you know, I had brought in, this name off, I had it off. If we change that account, we lose an unlimited debt.
Yeah, and you can't get that anymore.
Can't get it. And that's where the.
But you should be able to change a name on it, not change the.
No, just change that mailing address. That's what I've done.
Changed it. It showed up.
You don't change a name a lot of the time. Well, they'll change the mailing address. Because all you do is change, you know, people move.
I didn't change his mayor.
They don't care.
Went back.
And then fifteen, I was just showing you that's some of the best streetlight deals there. You got it, fifteen?
Yes.
Well, we didn't make it in.
You walked over there.
That, you can tell that, that would be a street light that he says by nine two, two fifteen, nine in the deco lights or something. And I think that's it. And the way this. Remember the income line and the expense line are what's the budget, what was the. And the twenty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-three is what's. On the twelve month budget, we had like a hundred, if you could look at it, a hundred, I don't know, I haven't been here. There was like a hundred and fifty-nine thousand or a hundred and fifty-seven thousand that was gonna go to our streets, that was gonna come from the general fund. Not, not gonna get income for that, okay? And so I took that and averaged it and it comes to two twenty-seven for this budget that you all are operating on now to spend for streets, which of course y'all haven't done that yet. And street maintenance is somewhere further up there where you spent twenty-five thousand and there's budgeted two hundred eighty-three.
That's it, so many changes.
Yeah, that's twenty-five thousand and that is already the spend of whatever two hundred thousand you know would have budgeted for a year. And of course it increased with the averaging process. And, but I, I remember when he did the bid, I told him that, when he said, remember he said it was to keep it under two fifty? He thought I did really some things. And because I said we need to count in, but we, they've already paid you because that's part of that.
Just, he wrote figured at two thirty-eight.
Oh, was it, okay. And anyway, that's, and the vehicle loans. I think the budget was originally said a thousand a year to pay on the, the two vehicle loans. And then averaging that, paying to twenty-four, that's how much it's been paid over the, so far. Now, realize here on the estimated, it's actual, it's estimated, but we haven't even finished August and September. There are still, so that'll increase. Well, maybe not so much. We've got one twenty-one thousand there, but it'll still increase.
We got one there. We got one of those twenty or something. Well, that's today.
And I'm gonna take it out. As I checked with the bank, I said, I'm not gonna have to pay this or is it gonna be in the, the automatic draw? And she said it would be in automatic draw, so I was gonna do that. So that special use, that just means it's coming from the general fund. And the auditors told me to use special, no, I said contingency. First they told me to use a contingency fund and then they said don't use a contingency fund. Because remember we would do the budget and anything that was left over to make it balance, we put in street maintenance. Everything that didn't need to be somewhere else, we put, of what we knew we were gonna take in. And of course, it doesn't have to balance. You can, you know, it doesn't have to balance, but I would always try to make it, you know, so you see.
Ideally, you want.
Exactly, yeah. And so that's why I always do, and I show where that everyone's gonna come from. It's gonna come from the general.
So we took the contingency fund out of there.
Because we have the, you know, expenses to, we didn't have anything extra, no anywhere. And I would have liked to have had something prepared for our proposed budget, which is normally what's done at this workshop. The mayor and I would have something proposed and it's, you know, for y'all to look at and tweak. But it was gonna be, I wouldn't get to get there, but I need to do it pretty soon. And like I said, we may just have to make the best estimate. And if y'all wanna take a stab at that, I don't know.
Do something by the end of September.
Right. Well, yeah, we have to have some public hearing. Like I said, we can, the thing I can't remember is if you have the hearing, can you vote on it the same day? I have to, because sometimes you can, like on zoning, you have to give some time in between the public hearing before you have to do the actual vote for the zoning change.
Didn't, didn't you have a vote on the, on the hearing at the, you know, six thirty to seven?
I'm thinking that we did. Yeah, I think that we did. I think we did. We had a, and then later we had a, yeah. It seemed like we did. And then we can also put the tax rate on there. We have to do that first to make sure it's published in a paper that they're gonna say the tax rate. And that on our special wording and slides and print on it.
The tax office does that, right?
No, I do not.
You really? Oh, Lord. I can't get all of this to get it.
Well, you have to have a budget covered. It says a certain thing on it, on the proposed, any of that budget. And then you have to have certain things in it. This is just like a. This is just like the need of it, you know, there's gotta be things like, what's the average household worth in China Grove? And if you set this tax rate, how much are they gonna pay?
The data comes from that.
No, it hasn't.
Data come from the tax?
They, that, that, uh, those calculations of the effective, uh, tax rate and the rollback rate. You can use that, you'll determine what you're gonna set your tax rate at. But all of that, uh, once that's done, we have to get it here on the budget. But what you're gonna do now, you're gonna estimate what you want, or decide what you wanna pay them in property tax, and then set your rate to bring that in. And as far as, you know, changing this, it's okay extending it to, to this one year, but it didn't hurt having it in the A's old because we have estimated calculations from them. And China Grove wasn't growing that fast, you could pretty much tell whether it was gonna, you know, not, if they couldn't have settled it, yeah, we would have initiated, you know, but he didn't have one. Because we, we can do it that early, get that out of the way, and then set the tax rate to.
It would only mess you up that one year when you had that balloon on, right?
It didn't, it didn't mess you up.
If you were to have.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Would only be that.
Yeah.
And then you'd be okay.
You don't have to worry about did not.
Have it all at the same time, cause there's so much to do anyway, but it's doable, I mean, it just has to, you know, it didn't really matter, I'm saying, but someday it will. You know, because when you're bigger, like, you know, I mean, how many houses would be built, you know, how many were, you know, coming in? You could estimate, you know, with their estimated calculations and what I had here, you know, you could do it, but it won't always be that way. So it's all right, if we can make it to subdivision in more years, you know. And what else is on it? Anyway, but it has to have a specific budget cover, say specific things, then it has to have a financial statements, it has to talk about the tax rate, the, you know, the, uh, the, uh, what the average house is appraised for, and what the tax rate, or how much money you'll give for that, and what else is on it, I don't know. That's, that's the main thing of it, and then when you publish those notices, they have to be a certain set of time, a certain order, and, and if the tax rate changes, if it's more than it was last year, if it brings in more revenue, then the wording is very particular, you have to tell the people how much more money that tax rate is gonna bring in, what the percentage of it is, and all of that, so. It's not just.
How long does that normally take you to do something?
It doesn't take long to do it if I have all the information, if I have all the information, it doesn't. Can I do just a minute, my family, I don't know, yeah. My son. They were cooking supper tonight, I said, save me some, but, you know, I'm like, hard way. Uh, so we don't really have a, I mean, it is a workshop, but it's not a proposed budget yet because, uh, the proposed budget wasn't done, has to be filed, you know, all this, we'll come see. Like I said, we usually do the workshop with some figures to go by, and I'm sorry, I didn't have that, you can see why.
So after looking at this, you, you be able to put yourself on a little priority list together? Or you, you, you got a lot, you got a lot of stuff.
I don't think I can get all the changes made, but I think I can do something to.
Priority zone.
I think I can do a estimate at the breaking point.
Get the, the meat out of the meat. And there's a lot of stuff there.
I mean, I can, I can make some changes.
I was gonna say, on some of these little accounts.
I could just gobble up, yeah.
If you could just go in and do that, change the then, and that will wipe those things out, you know, putting them to the proper amount.
Uh, the difficult ones are gonna be the court ones and the paperwork, it's, you know, yeah, so.
So I'm thinking that if you could do, if, if, you know, if, if Latoya's in, is in tomorrow, where maybe you could just sit and do all these little ones, write them out then out of the way, and then be able to, to start really looking at the other larger ones. And then I know with the court ones, it's gonna take.
That's gonna be hard, cause I would have to, well, it's gonna take more help from me and Latoya, there's no way possible.
Yeah, in fact.
Uh, she, you know, she's doing a good job, or she's doing, she just doesn't know what it is she doesn't know.
Yeah.
You know, and she's gonna create.
From now forward to be able to break out.
That's gonna take a while, because I'm gonna have to go back and pull everything and look at it, and, uh, what I, you know, I showed you some of the closing documents, they're all on there. Better things aren't, uh, especially, but it's a lot.
Maybe we need, uh, kind of next meeting, maybe we can get somebody, so we can test, we, uh.
Because, well, the, the problem is, I, I can manage it and I know what needs to be done, but I can't, you know, possibly do it all. I've been, I've been staying here till seven.
I know, I know.
You know, well, I have taken a couple hours off during the day to take my mom to the doctor, go to the bank, or, but I figured it out.
Eight, thirty, I told my doctor, car was still there.
But, uh, you know, I wanted to try my best to have something here tonight, and with the pressure there on me, so I focused on that. I did fries and chips and pacey meals, and Latoya did, I asked her if she would help me with that, and I'll tell her, you know, I told her how, uh, what I used to do is I would put like a couple of minutes in this hat away, and then when somebody's down at the sun there, I would go in and on.
You couldn't have all of one time.
Exactly, and so I showed her how to do that, and so, you know, um, and she's been emailing for me, and it's just been two weeks, you know? But I did talk to her about that too, but that's another thing, we'll talk about that. And I would like to, to get the experienced people that have been here all the years and can come in and do it on, you have to watch, you know? So, hey, I don't, I'm keeping.
This is temporary, though.
I don't think it's temporary, not once the court gets gone.
Once you get it all, everything in line, things work a lot.
Well, the court law, when there's an actual court, when there's an actual court, you know, right now, they're doing like eighteen, ninety, thirty, forty days on a, I mean, uh, you know, defendants on a docket. And that, you shouldn't even hold a court day for that, you should try to, you know, have more on the docket. And once the, these guys are, you know, there's more officers now, and they're writing tickets, we used to have a docket of a hundred and twenty, and all three of us, with all three computers going, couldn't hardly keep up when they were coming on the court days. And then once you do that, that's just like, again, cause then you have, okay, they don't show up and there's paperwork and processes, and then you gotta do warrants, they, they haven't done that.
They got a warrant ready for the judge. Get a warrant ready for the judge before he leaves.
Yeah, we used to have him already printed up and he would sign it while we were up there. I know what they're doing, I just do know that Latoya told me that, uh, the state called her to stop. And I thought once I, I'm not, there's.
Uh, no, uh, she's done the best she can with what she's had to work with.
She came in here with no experience in that, in court or city, and was given administrator of the court, the whole she made.
But I thought she had it, I thought we, she came from, she had a number or something.
She volunteered there in their permits section for a couple months.
Oh, oh, I thought she was actually.
And the other one, Jennifer Diaz, now I don't know, I didn't look at her application, Latoya just told me that, uh, Jennifer Diaz said that, uh, she worked for one of the cities in the court, but it's a bigger court, so she only knew a little bit of it. You know, like, you know, I'm, we're small, so we're gonna know every, everything telling you that. Yeah, and you have a big one, you know, everybody's gotta do just their part, you know?
She was from Winthrop.
Was it Winthrop? I think it was another city.
They just overwhelmed her when she got here.
And she quit, that's what, Latoya said, but anyways.
Well, how, well, how can we do this, to get you something, so we can get going here, what do we?
Well, I, uh.
Well, I mean, and how does, but like with money, like all that in America?
Well, why don't I do this, why, and I have kinda started on, um, um, what I would like Latoya to do, and what I'd like to mention help to do, and myself. And, uh, that way we can keep up, and how about I put something together for y'all and, uh, paste, pay, uh, when I live here, I was averaging about twenty six dollars a night, I've been twenty nine years taking care of all of this, and Latoya was giving me twenty five grand in my experience. And I like her, she's a sweet girl, I think she's.
She goes down to twenty, yeah.
Yeah, she did just this week, and, uh, girls that were here, like, we were staying in, in five or seven minutes, whatever, they were just making, you know, they were paying salary, but a few hours are hours, it was like, uh, one of them was making, uh, twelve or fifteen, and the other was making eighteen, I don't remember.
What do you think, I mean, cause when Latoya, I mean, that, Latoya started, Jean, what was she making?
Twenty.
She started at, uh.
Sixteen, seventeen or something.
Seventeen, she started at seventeen, and then she pretty soon moved up to twenty, and then recently moved to twenty five, and overtime too. See, that's another thing, if you're gonna have a budget, you're gonna give people overtime, you're not budgeting in here for overtime, and stop it, I don't wanna see people get it, but it's my responsibility to make sure we stay in that budget.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, with, uh, them having as much overtime as they're getting, that's paying another person almost, you know, and, um.
Was Latoya now with Jean working three days a week, or she gonna be working the five that she was, you know?
I, I thought she was working.
I don't know.
What, we decided four and a half, wasn't it?
I know, well, we haven't, with that, oh, yeah, the person, but we haven't, we need to get that, yeah, we need to get that.
Well, um, I'll talk to her, but what she worked the week before I came, um, she had overtime, forty hours plus overtime. And then she didn't, the, the week I started, she wasn't here on Monday, she came in for a couple of hours. And then she asked, she said, if it was okay, she said, go fight it, and, and I said, well, that's up to you, you know, cause I'm not gonna tell right now till I, you know, know what it's supposed to be.
Just try to get everything, you know.
And then today she said, oh, she's so, um, but, um, you know.
But I'm thinking, well, if, if she, you know, could get some other help.
They can teach her a lot.
Well, that's what, that would be a good thing.
What I told her about, I told her, I said, Latoya, my plan for the city was always, she, once the court was gone and the police department was settled, they had, they had some administrative office help to do their reports, there were, some of them are very difficult. And to free them from having to do that.
Yeah, we did that, we did that.
Uh, Reda did that, she's the one that had retired from E D S and had all the law enforcement, drug force, you know, D D A that has force and stuff. And, uh, then Clarissa, the one who claimed as the court clerk.
Yeah, I'm in.
And, uh, she, she mainly had the court, but she would try to help me. And that track I had, uh, decided, you know, what I had thought was best for the city, was to hire somebody to start helping with the city secretary duties and train them. But stay with them for a couple of years, because you can't possibly get all of that down in a year, there's too many things, some is from around here too. And, um, then things happened, I needed to do that, but the other problem was neither one of those girls wanted it, they wouldn't touch it, they said, no, that, you know, they saw what was, not, not the events that were going on, but the amount of possible, the work they didn't want.
Yeah.
And so we needed to find somebody to do that anyway, and I talked to Latoya and she said she'd be very interested in that, so.
Well, so you could maybe train her.
Uh, that's what I, that's what.
And we can make it Clarissa, since she's familiar with the court.
She could come in and put them on.
And her and her Latoya together right now, maybe could even get the court stuff caught up.
Well, they could be working on.
They, um, they can, no, because what you have is you've got people coming in that you've gotta do, and then you've gotta start, start everything. And then once the court has more, the more tickets are written, it's gonna be a bigger docket, it's gonna be a bigger load, you know? And we've gotta get those computers fixed, I don't know what happened, but, uh, encode is on two computers, but neither one of us can use it at the same time. And now mine says nothing, no items on it at all on my computer. And when we had it going, all three of them had encode, and all three of us could be working on it at the same time, and, um.
Did you have a tech, who's that guy that was coming out helping you all?
Well, we had, we had a guy, we used a guy from computer nerves, but we always asked for the same guy. So he knew our system, he knew what we were doing, and we could keep track of what we needed, and encode is sometimes if we had it with M in on it, but that's all.
Do you know him, you know who that was?
William, his name is William.
Did you go, I mean, is there?
Oh, his paperwork's in there, yeah, I can even think of his last name, it was.
When we could figure out who it was, maybe he could get it going for.
Oh, I'm sure he can, but, uh.
Could, you know, let it get caught up, if you're not.
And to be honest, y'all, and I, uh, I, I would imagine all along, I don't wanna stay here that much longer. You know, I, uh, I don't mind staying for a couple of years, I'd even maybe in the second year start to, you know.
Have Latoya know.
Have Latoya do more of it, have her carry it. Uh-huh, and, and I would, you know, Reda would be the ideal one to be back, and I know some of you don't like that idea, but they have people that are trained.
I'm the one who can do the job.
And they can do the job.
That's what I, I said that from the beginning.
And, um.
It's pretty obvious, there's a lot.
There is, and, yeah.
Now, just getting back on the past.
And we can, we can go back on hours then if we have to, maybe, you know.
Share the hours, but.
Yeah.
The other thing is, uh, I don't think Reda's gonna wanna work that much longer either, you know, so.
Where do you, the time when, you know, when replacements.
Clarissa, if she comes back, my guess is she would probably stay on for a much longer time than Reda normally would, because of our age and we're kinda ready to retire. At, you know.
But in the meantime too, we could possibly hire someone part-time to start running Reda's job before Reda.
Exactly, before she left, exactly.
And then we have to go full-time.
And I, I don't mind.
Yeah, so Reda's.
I don't mind staying on in a limited for longer than two or three years, but, you know.
I have the same community capacity.
Same amount of time, same capacity, I wouldn't mean it as much either. And that was what I had originally thought would be the best thing for the city, and it wouldn't, wouldn't be bad for me.
I think it's a plan.
So, and I, I don't know if y'all know, but fifty thousand a year for a city administrator, city secretary, for a lot of those jobs, a lot more. So I can set myself part-time, but I won't work part-time until this can go.
Yeah, because Jean, um, I'm already in a duty.
Okay, I'll catch up on some.
Like, what was it, sixty five for this secretary, that one lady?
Zena?
Zena.
Zena Tepper, Zena and I are one of the only two people that have been with the same city for as many years as we have into the twenty years or so, yeah. Currie, she was at Currie for years.
Is she still there, or did she?
No, she's, there was some kind of lawsuit.
Or Shetland Park, Shetland Park, she's there.
But she was making pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
The court, uh, sixty five thousand.
And that's for just the city secretary.
No, just for secretarial, that's what I said.
Yeah.
I feel you know this stuff, Susan, and I feel you would be the most, I felt you were the most qualified at the time. I didn't know anybody else that believed, we tried, we put things in the paper, the opportunity was there. And we, I, I could see from the frustration, excuse me, but I'm.
Yeah, pardon me, yeah. We'll say talk in a minute.
Um, well, I think that for the next month, six weeks at least, we need to hire.
Well, should we be doing that at this meeting, though, right now, we need a way, because.
Well, I was gonna say contract.
She is a Q R D.
To hire, well, I, I think we should hire the two girls back in order, I mean, uh, uh, this is my opinion, okay? In order to help Susan get all these accounts straightened out, help get it going in the right direction. And then if we need to approve it at, at a city agenda, then we can start our new year out with all of that in as part of the proposal.
Oh, it's a new budget, that's a new budget.
And I'm thinking, whether we are a subcontractor as a sal, you know, a, a, a employee, in order to get this where it needs to be a whole lot closer than what it is, we need that extra help. Because we still have things going on day to day and.
And we said it's a new A, cause I can't.
Yeah, and, and she can't get it straightened out.
Clarissa could start doing it, Latoya could watch her, and, uh, whoever we know.
Yeah.
And we could be the third one too, because there's gonna be a lot of catch-up before. Have you done your racial profiling report yet for the?
No, no.
See, that's a very difficult report, and then.
Two thousand, two thousand thirteen is missing, and we have to do this year too.
Okay, and see, the last one that Reda did, they had changed the, uh, what they wanted, and it was very difficult, and she created one for the police department, and she was commended, and they used hers for an example, so she could come in and get that done right away. And I think the asset forfeiture, um, report has not been done with the police department, I saw two, um, two notices from the attorney general, and that hasn't, and, and you know, that's stuff that they, uh, maybe take, and then you should be in a box in there, we have any assets she taken, you know? You know what it is, explained in the, asset forfeiture.
I don't think there's much in there, we got.
And that's the good thing about that report, and she's a crazy.
But they could probably papers be turned in. But they could part papers we turned in.
And there's, there's so, there's so many reports, yeah, you have to report any, but there's so many reports for the court. Uh, you have to do an excess fines, uh, report quarterly, whether you go over that amount or not, and we've never been anywhere near going over the amount that's allowed by law that would consider you a speed traffic, and you have to send it to the state. But there's so many monthly, quarterly reports with that thing that I know weren't being done, um, it's a lot, and, and.
I don't know what I was listening to these stuff.
I, I really honestly believe the only reason I was able to do that was I had been with the city so long. But that part, the, the city operations were there, and so I could focus, yeah, I could focus on training. I trained for a year, going to other courts, going to classes before we implemented the court. And then I worked six days a week, working Saturdays, getting that all set up, you know, the first quarter, because we didn't have, uh, the courts on, we're announced, we were all on paper. And then I hired Clarissa, and we were on the floor with all the dockets spread out, I mean, it was, all the things you have to do on paper, it's crazy. And that, the council then approved the thousand dollars to buy that system, and, you know?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I, I think the power to do this, to hire these people, we need them.
Do you want applications still now, because they didn't all their work is here since they got?
Well, there has to be an application, yeah.
Okay, an application, I meant an ad, I'm sorry, I didn't mean an application, I meant an ad.
I, I, we have to advertise.
Well, it, it is more like this, uh.
That's why I said, I see, a contract for the next six weeks, these people will come in. Then if we want to hire, we could do that.
It would be, they, they would be a, a, and at the next meeting, to be.
Hired as permanent?
As interim.
So, or then hired, is that what you're saying, and then affirmative at a meeting?
Temporary, like an interim.
As an interim lawyer she wants to call.
And then they get permanent at a meeting, is that what I meant?
I think that's what the ordinance read, and so that.